John White.
He's gonna replace that one with a real one.
I have no idea.
Hey, Joe. Did you see where Sharon said she'll take care of Young Youngs?
Yeah.
Call the city of Gold Bar Councilman for Tuesday, October the second. Order to stand by. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Last note that all council members who are here tonight has is John White and Sergeant Tracy. Denise Beeston is ill, and we hope she comes back soon. We have the agenda up for approval. Now entertain a motion to approve and/or approve modifications to the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to modify the agenda to cover three additional items, two of which were generated from the Finance Committee, and one item which is kind of a personal item but directed, it is city business and it's directed to the city to take some action with regard to a public spam, common spam box in her email, because I've been getting spam that I think means...
Okay, what is... Okay, so you want us to add new business items.
So I made that motion, so I guess it's...
Seven, eight, and nine, which are?
Which are common spam box and email.
Okay.
Transfer of city checking from Bank of America Coastal Bank.
Okay.
And a discussion, basically, regarding whether we should be paying for certification for individuals or whether they should come pre-qualified.
Okay. Okay, the three items are seven, common spam box, a transfer from Bank of America to Coastal Bank, and paying for certifications. Do you have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll get to the mayor's report right fast. We'll start with a little bit of stuff that was done well before I said that we would be... We took... Well, for it, and we've talked about the vibration that's going on there, and the question that was raised up by the guy who did the vibration analysis, but when he did it, the shutter-type vibration was not present. So we ripped up an accelerometer to a laptop, to a single-axis accelerometer, and the motors were not running on Monday, the wells were not running. So we placed the... We went through the dry run to make sure all the equipment worked. This is the type of results we get out. It's a JPEG, which is a plot of the acceleration with time, and this is about a 90-second span. And so what happened is very little here, because nothing's running, and so this is where I wrapped on the side of the motor with my thumb, with my knuckle, and then Richard Baker wrapped on the other side with his knuckle, and you can see that it records it. And so we want to take something like five of these plots. Kill this, this one. And then with that data, we can go back to the vibration guy, and we'll take one up here on the motor. That's where there was a lot of vibration. And then I felt down here, this was the land touching with a hand, and there was no vibration on the case. It was zip. There was vibration on the wall, and then Richard Baker reported vibration in the next building, the auxiliary building, where the extra pumps are gonna go someday. And so we still need to try to figure out, we've got a while before we're gonna have it taken apart, see if we can learn anything from those. Not sure that we will get any information, but we will definitely try to do it, get the information back to the vibration guy.
What's gonna be the result of just you get to the vibration guy?
Five plots, and what you will see, oh, and also what he wants...
No, 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 my question is, is that gonna tell us a part or something that's gonna happen?
Is that gonna what?
Identify a particular part or something?
We don't know. He wanted to see that, he also wanted to see the instantaneous flow rate along with it, see if there's a correlation between flow rate and vibration. And so what you're gonna see is a boom change, settle, boom change, and then we're gonna plot it as good as we can, but we may not have the resolution on the flow rate to do it, to our time plots, and see if there's a change in the flow rate. And probably we will come out with nothing of consequence. I'd be surprised if we did, but nonetheless, it's something that we can take and we can have documented, and might give a hint towards something. But I don't have, I'm aware, I'm gonna say, a hawk 212 feet down the shaft, it's got a crack in it, and doesn't want that to come out.
No, I wouldn't expect that.
And... But it's not a motor vibration, it's a once-around continuous vibration. It's a shutter that comes and goes, and...
Well, I'm gonna try and solve the engineering right here and now. I'm just curious what impact it has, because what are we talking about for taking the part and putting it back together, getting...
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. And what kind of time period?
John, what kind of time period?
I don't remember what you're saying.
The best time is headed.
Best case, worst case?
A month.
Worst case is a month, or best case?
A month if you give the parts.
If you need the parts.
Close by, rather than having them shipped from East Coast.
For being heavy.
I mean, you know, it's something to start at the beginning of the rainy season. We have time.
John, I'm just... I hate to do things by emergency. I like to do things by plan, if possible, you know, you can't always do that.
Well, we've got, we're not gonna stop the pump until the rainy season starts, which is November generally, and so whatever we can get done in October will do. And if it leads us to something that's wonderful, if it doesn't, then we won't take the pumps after November anyway.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, you also have in your, in your package that left containment today, this is a, something that I've been working on for a while. I'll pull this up. There's been a lot of work done on so far about a recreational area for economic development. That's the pump going, that's the Reader pit rebuild, that's the additional trailheads that the county bought, and that's looking, and that's working with all the different government agencies to work toward a common use of the outdoor recreational areas here. And that's going along, I guess as well as you can, as these things go. The next step up is to finish Reader and get the new trailhead put into place. And there's grants, there's grant money being sought to do that. In the meantime, there is a thing called the... Now it goes away. Oh, Innovative Participation Zone, or something like that. It's a statewide deal, the state will give you grant money to help with economic development. And there's several of those going on. And so there's been, as a spinoff of that, there's been talk about applying for that grant. And of course, those are fairly complex things, and the city has already taken the point on doing this, and it's gotten to the point now where the first work needs to be done to start setting the basis for applying for the grant. And that is not stopping people from working on it otherwise. And so there's sort of two train of thought on this. There's the, we need the professional person to do all the planning and stuff, so you can make the formal presentation of the plan to the state and get a grant to go further. And then there's others who say, what, can't we just do this ourselves, just as girls? And so anyway, what it is right now, the first step is to do the, is to take a first step in this. And this, this discusses what's gonna be done, phase one, phase two. Phase one is get everybody together and talk about it. The, let me see, and Ashley... Has asked the city of Gold Bar to come up with $200, there we go, to contribute toward this. And this is for phase one, and I know Monroe has put money, it's Sultan's signed money to do this and continue. So, anyway, so, and part of it is, for example, Prospectors Plus here, they also manufacture some of their own equipment, but they don't have any manufacturing facility in the valley, but they're an example of what this thing is talking about, where there's a recreational area, in this case, gold panning, put on with a business that sells to gold painters that also manufactures equipment for doing this. And then the thing ties in to seeing if you can get different money to build better solutions or whatever, in their case. And this goes around for a lot of different things. So, and so anyway, what they're like, what she asked as far as city Gold Bar put up 200 bucks to add in, and that would show, that would keep the whole valley together. And, I mean, theoretically, 200, 500 bucks, but I wanted to get this county's opinion on that first.
So, so I guess you're leaving it open for discussion?
I'm leaving it open for discussion.
Okay. So I've heard from some former council members, their plans for development over here. Not necessarily in agreement with those plans, but I guess development is good, and so I don't know that I'd be opposed to it either, but what, so what I read in here is, I'm just kind of in the dark about this, but I don't know a whole lot about it. So performance targets, car business development, recruit one or more new companies per year. So the $200 is just an ante up, but this is really our goal, right?
Yep.
So what are we doing to achieve that goal?
It's a, it's a five-to-10-year plan to bring manufacturers into the valley.
Manufacturers only?
Well, no.
I heard you say recreation.
It's recreation, and then the retail business of recreation, and the manufacturers to support the retail business using the recreational area as a testing ground for their new products. And they're talking about small businesses and stuff like that. And Prospectors Plus is a prime example. They sell to the recreational gold painters. They make products, they take them up, create, and use them, and then say, ah, I can make them better this way. And there's also mountain biking, there's rafting, those are pretty established industries, but there's also the paddle company there, and Sultan does the same thing.
And you have Great Wolf Lodge, South Olympia, and you have Wild Waves between Fife and Tacoma, and I'm, I myself would like to see a water park or something similar within this area. But, well, I guess the reason I'm asking the question is, what, because I know there's some regulation on government officials soliciting businesses, so I don't know where that falls. That's kind of a, part of my question is, what do we do to solicit those businesses?
I haven't worked that much. I know Jeff Sachs, for example, is the economic development manager of the city of Monroe. He's out hustling, they've got the table places coming in, they've got the triathletes showing up, so they're really marketing that middle lake they got. And so, and then of course, Sultan's got the industrial district that they've been chilling for a while. Now, we've got a commercial area, and we don't have quite as, quite as much, but we've got the Raptors, Prospectors Plus, you've got the ski people down there, and it's, there's been no effort put out by the city of Gold Bar that supported it. And so we're sort of tagging along for the ride so far. I've put personal time in on the recreational areas around, mainly because that will draw people back in, and the local businesses will prosper, and it will create local jobs.
Can I kind of comment on that?
Sure.
Because I'm part of the Sky Valley Chamber of Commerce, and we've been talking about this actually for quite some time. The Sky Valley is way underappreciated by the people who live in Sky Valley. For example, the index climbing wall is known nationwide, and Sky River is known nationwide. People come here to climb on the index wall and to rack the Sky River. So it's, a lot of it is advertising and promotion of that kind of resource that we have, because it's huge. There's a lot of money, there's a lot of potential in this valley for recreation. And it's underappreciated, it's underutilized, and it's kind, I think that's what the whole focus is here, is to promote it as far as letting people know, not just locally, but around the world.
But it's really two parts, actually. There's the recreational, come recreate here, okay? That's where you're putting the stuff, that stuff you've been talking about, okay? And then there's this other, the IPZ, which is, hey, let's build on that with more, with manufacturing. And that's a state Washington effort in a lot of places. Of course, they're talking about bioengineering, and pharmaceuticals, you know, genetic development, pharmaceuticals, and stuff like that, and aerospace, of course. And doing something on a recreational basis would be very new in this program, so...
It all kind of ties together.
So, so we're just, currently, we don't have any established goals?
That is correct. I don't have any established goals particularly. I mean, encouragement, not doing it, but no, I don't have a set of plans. Now, we did have, there are things we can do. Our practice dad came in, and we got a free $50,000 study on how you can make Gold Bar attractive for people to stop and go around. And so that's, that's a very, very good program, very, very good plan. But as far as pursuing on this, you know, no, no real work's been done yet.
So I have no objection to putting money up to, but, because $200 seem very much. But I would like to see us have an established goal, and find where we want to go to, if we want to support.
That's the, what the $200 is gonna be used for. That's the, see if we can go back to, let me find where I was. Okay, let's go down here. Prior work, there's the prior work. Here we go, phase one proposal, economic development, overall revenue. Okay. Citizen current recruitment of this, of manufacturers, design and coordinate business incentives, facilitate fundraising actions, okay? And this developed structure to do this. In other words, it's exactly what you said, and this has been going on informally, and this is a formal implementation of that with an emphasis toward manufacturing.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is phase one proposal.
Yes.
This is $1,250.
Yeah.
And it's kind of spread out, I guess, over the cities?
Yeah.
What does the $1,250 do? Does it just put everything on paper, or does it actually...
It puts everything, it has meetings and puts things on paper.
Right. Now, after phase one, what's going on?
We have phase two.
So then Gold Bar has to come up with more money to cover the two...
If we decide to stay in, but yes. And assuming that phase one looks reasonable, you know, Monroe's gonna stay in, and Sultan's gonna stay in, but, yeah, but Gold Bar and Sky Comish and Index and those may or may not stay in, or we may stay in only on a nominal basis, just to get our name in the paper.
Well, you know, Gold Bar's not very big. In order to get people to get there, you gotta have some businesses out here.
That's exactly right.
People want to stop and spend money.
Yeah.
Okay? We're talking restaurants and restaurants and all kinds of other little things, okay? There, I mean, there's multitude, like, it's not very big. We don't have a very big presence on the road between the city limits to have a whole bunch of businesses. So it seems to me like the people that are gonna benefit the most from these, other than advertising for Gold Bar, which I think is ridiculous, but to take the ones that are gonna benefit the most, the ones with most space, that has the most business, and that would be Monroe.
And Monroe, and Monroe.
And Monro, and Monroe, and Monroe.
Yeah.
Because these little bitty towns, they want us to put money in, but I wanna see some benefit from our money. I don't want to see $200 thrown out there just for...
There's, there's gonna be no measurable benefit for probably two or three years.
But, but the point here is, I think, that unless you make investment into some kind of growth, this is the only, the only thing I've seen proposed here in quite some time that has any potential in the long term for generating revenue. And without that revenue base, the city is totally doomed.
There's two things, one is the revenue base, and two is the jobs. You have local jobs, which is a big emphasis on this stuff. And we have commercial property, you go out past Gory, there's big spaces there, you got a lot of lumber, which I've always felt should be a water park, and...
Well, I mean, that's what I say, we need, we need a plan to go with. If we're gonna commit to this, we need to, we need to, as a corporate body, develop a plan on the board.
Okay.
I agree with that, because just saying that somebody's going to start working with this, that's fine, but I think if you're putting money in, if you're investing your time, and money from the city, which comes from the citizens, okay? I think that we ought to have a solid plan and say, look, if you're gonna do this, then Gold Bar gets this, 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 this.
Whoa, 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 I don't know, we can go...
No, okay, well, let's wait a minute, it's not going to an actually Colosseum situation, okay?
Well, I don't want a Colosseum.
Well, no, I'm saying, it's the idea that a city council can generate businesses. I went to have a nice, long, sit down in Yakima about their development, and they said that they learned that the only thing a city can do is make the city clean and safe. And beyond that, unless you're an entrepreneur willing to put your money up and show up, like we have, we have some around here, and take the risk, those are the guys who generate the businesses, so you make it attractive for them. As far as saying, hey, we are gonna put a, over here on the other side of town...
That's not what I'm saying.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, if we're gonna put money forward, I wanna see something other than advertising benefiting. But this is just... I mean, I could buy ads during new...
No, we're not gonna buy...
It's $200. That's not, that's not a good one.
Wait a second, that's already happened, and the county is doing that, we're not putting any money on it per se, because they're making the big tourist matter, okay? And I'm not sure, it's, at some stage, it's getting approved by the county council. So that part of the advertising, and here's Wallace Farm, and here's So-and-so, and here's Bronder Rose, and all that stuff's already been done. This is an emphasis toward bringing in manufacturers, okay? It's a different thing, it's different. So, and the question is...
Manufacturing of what?
Manufacturing of recreational equipment, because this is a recreational area. Hey, that's right down here, and that's what the plan says.
Well, first of all, we're talking about $200, just to go find out what it looks like, is that right?
We...
It's $200, we're just gonna toss the $200 out there and see what happens? And then make the choice after that, if we wanna continue, is that right?
All we get is, what are we gonna do? All we get is basically what we've been talking about, several meetings in the, minutes from the meetings, okay? And not only are you allowed to go to these meetings, you would be encouraged to attend these things.
A question.
Yeah.
How long is this gonna take from, I mean, it looks up there, I see something about September 2013. Now, is that for the whole thing?
No, no, here's, we want to apply, they want to apply for the IPZ's funding in September 2013. And that's, that's where, you know, this is not something to fill out a form, I mean, this is, you gotta come up with a plan, develop it, get people buying in, have all this other stuff going, and so it's a long, it's a, it's a business plan with a lot of details on it. And all we're gonna do is facilitate the development planning process that makes it ready to implement, and where you get the team together. Get the team together and say, hey, this is what we're trying to do.
Yeah. Now, what about this second half here, where it says best vacations document and application, and $2,500, is that still included in that first budget?
No, uh-uh. All we're doing is phase one.
Well, it says, phase one proposal.
Let me look. But first phase, for a total of $1,200.
Well, first phase and item number one of phase one.
Well, I know, but I'm saying the $200, let me pull this back up, if anybody can find it. Excuse me for a moment. I'm lost in the... Here we go. There we go. Yeah, okay, here we go. This is, this is the email, and let me blow it up a little bit. This is, this is the email and let me blow it up a little bit. You go down here and first phase will take to the end of the year for a total of twelve hundred dollars. And that's phase one. And here's how.
Do you understand all that?
Okay, so it's two hundred bucks just for, just to the end of the year for phase one. And then twenty thirteen city budgets, we include the next seven thousand dollars for phase two and three. Which means we're going to talk about it.
Seven thousand dollars isn't just for normal lives.
No, no, uh-uh, no, it says two thousand bucks. She's proposing that herself.
And it looks like she's got a pretty good handle on, on proportioning things as, you know, obviously Monroe has more games and they're contributing more.
I know, I just kind of have an issue with us spending more money when the city is struggling as it is.
That's, that's always a problem.
But you don't get anything if you don't have those things.
You don't get anything if you don't have any earned money to spend.
True.
Okay, spending money for something that's pie in the sky right now, while we don't have any money in the budget to do it, is ridiculous. It's a ridiculous thing to do.
Okay. Okay, have we discussed this enough? Anybody want to make any more comments?
What would you like from us? This is under your five hundred dollars, so you really don't need to come to ask us, do you?
Yeah, I just, that, that is correct.
Were you wanting advisory, bonus, something?
Do something like this without getting some sort of concurrence.
And I appreciate that because there's more money coming down the pipe that we have to get even more attention to.
It's also a decision about participating in a big operation.
So in my opinion, I take a counter opinion to the opinion that's been expressed. In that two hundred dollars is extremely minimal and there are other places, I think, where we can, I've been complaining. Other places where money can be cut, a whole lot more money can be cut. And I understand the point that's made, if you don't have it, you shouldn't spend it. But, but I look to the future, you need revenues to support this city. And, and so if we have to spend two hundred dollars to help us to get that mindset, to look to the future, to what we can do to generate revenues in this area, I think it's money that's positively spent. And so I have no problem parting with two hundred dollars for this project.
Well, you have no problem, Bob?
Look, I, I kind of think both positions have validity here. And, and quite frankly, the longer, more I spend time in government, the less, or the more skeptical I become on promises. So, and I agree with, with Ken, two hundred bucks, I think we should at least go to this bar with it. But I, after that, I'd keep the skepticism radar up to max.
By the time we do our twenty thirteen budget, we will be halfway through this process. And I would love to have a councilperson, a pro and con, sit in on those meetings.
Yeah, but if you put two hundred dollars down on this project, you know, it almost commits us to continuing on with the, the seven thousand dollars.
No, no, I don't think, I don't feel any commitment to do that. I feel enough commitment to go see what they got to say for two hundred bucks. After that, we'll talk, you know what I mean? You know, that's, that's, you know, there's a very clear line here between phase one and phase two. And in phase one has, okay, I got the specifications, documents, and the application is here. So we got something concrete to look at at that point in time.
If you notice something about the phase one proposal, if anybody's paid any attention to this. Phase one has a number one and a number two on there, okay. The first one is the twelve hundred dollars which just carries us to the end of the year.
Well, I don't think that's quite true. I, I don't think, this letter here doesn't match the numbers anyway. There's already money that's been spent. I'm only hearing us being asked for two hundred dollars for now and the end of the year, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that's all we're up on, on the, on the platform for. And they say they're going to do item one and item two. And if they do that, two hundred bucks is cheap.
But I want it spelled out here. I don't want us giving two hundred dollars off to something and then all of a sudden they come back a little while later and say, well, you committed to phase one and if you notice phase one has parts one and two. I want it cleared out. I want it spelled out in English, that's two hundred dollars on this particular twelve hundred and fifty dollars, with no commitment unless, till we verify it and look at it.
Yeah, the numbers don't match, I agree.
No.
Well, she said twelve hundred bucks and this one said twelve fifty and she wrote her email before this thing was.
Okay, so she's only talking about item one then?
Item one, yeah.
Not item two?
No, not item two, uh-uh.
No, I want it spelled out that way.
It says here that first phase will take us to the end of the first year.
You know, mine's supposed to be an item one.
Well, it said first phase and I see first phase proposal. Item one, item two. And then phase two.
Oh, oh, oh.
And then phase two is on the other page.
It comes at item three.
Huh? Well, that's item three, it's page.
Yeah, page three is.
Now maybe she means to say, will carry us to item one or something, I don't know, but.
Well, that's, since it was, the money was so close, that's what I, what I felt. Okay, so what we're saying, we'll do two hundred, two hundred dollars is toward item, phase one proposal, item one.
Yes, and it, and it's got to be spelled out.
Well, let me look here, phase one proposal, fits item one and two.
See, phase one. Item one and two are a total of four thousand dollars and we've only been asked for two hundred.
That's right.
Right.
And that's going to be phase one, item one.
So I think the clarification is, the letter from Carolyn, is this all a phase one? Or that's just working on phase one for this year? And some more of phase one will happen in.
Yeah, is it phase one part one or is it phase one part two?
Yeah, exactly.
I want clarification.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, okay. Okay, you're okay with phase one, part one for two hundred bucks, okay? And that's all for, all for twenty twelve, no more. Okay, that's, that's it enough of the, Carolyn about that.
And anything from the map, we discuss again.
Yeah, and that was, and what she said in her email was, let's see, she's got twenty five hundred here. What we got next here, forty five, there's six, there's seven thousand.
Yeah, item four is a big one.
Yeah, so.
But isn't, now, now, I see all of this meeting are grant basically in September two thousand thirteen, right?
Yeah.
And so, when does that, so does two thirteen?
I'll have to, let's get the two hundred bucks for the rest of the, for the phase one item one. Say, yep, Carolyn do that. No more, we're not going to do anything else until, you know, come back to more specifics. Because she wrote this email before this person brought the, had the meeting.
There's no date on this letter though.
Uh, this meeting, this meeting was held last Friday, I can't remember, last week, sometime thirty, I missed it.
That this was, and this letter.
Oh, it's Friday, it's Friday because it was after the homecoming race.
Okay, and this letter doesn't have any phase three in it. You know, Carolyn's email is talking about phase two and phase three.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking it's one.
Item one, two and three rather than phase one, two and three?
There's no equation difference.
That's why our confusion is so high.
Not a challenge.
So is this still part of the mayor's report or?
Yeah, so, okay.
It's been a lot of time.
Okay, so, so we got a simple solution, I'll make that happen. Okay, kill her both thanks. Okay, thank you. All right.
On the back page.
Okay, next we have, where are we, we're up here.
Okay.
What's on that?
Stat report.
No, that's my agenda.
John, you want me to make a statement?
Sidewalk should be poured.
Yeah, so, so just on this last item, I just got passed one out here, there's private monies are coming to cover the two hundred dollars.
Oh, donation time.
Donation, fantastic.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. So you said go ahead and sign the woodconcretes?
I think they're going to start pouring the concrete sidewalks tomorrow. The volunteers were out to sign the uprights, concrete was poured, they did the job. So we should be able to sign at the western town within the next week, in place. And we're working on painting the waterways. That's it.
Sergeant Casey.
Just about everything I have in my written report that I put out. Since the last meeting, we haven't had near the number of general complaints. But then again, the dogs weren't the primary issue, were, were kind of dealt with, come towards two weeks of the month, so. That seems to be so. Did quite a few traffic complaints in town, first is getting the most. So we'll be out, we've issued a few tickets and a lot of warnings and we'll continue to do that, try to get it settled down a little bit. Substance complaints are up a little bit. So we're more specifically dealing with one house right now. That is, it's kind of in a startup phase, I guess, right now and we want to try to shut down before it starts up. I think this is the best shot we have at in that, unless we do work on it. Other than that, just, just what's in here. One man did confront, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, a man confronted a couple of would-be burglars at Dunn Point. And as, as much as we kind of applaud the fact that we got those two guys in custody and booked into jail for more minor charges because it was before they had done the big deed they were there to do. We also want to make sure everybody knows to use caution, if you have any would-be burglars and that sort of thing, because a lot of times they have them too. That can go pretty bad in great paths, so.
Thank you.
Be it.
Okay, we'll hit council comments, we'll start with Ken.
Well, I guess Chris is not here to hear it, but I'm sorry to see Chris go. And I guess that's the only comment I have at the moment.
Danny.
Your comment.
Elizabeth.
Question, just for Casey. What is the rules and regulations on these kids' bikes? When they're riding, like down the sidewalk, down the road?
Washington State permits bicycles to be ridden on the roadway. When ridden on the roadway, they do have to comply with most of the rules of the road. And then also, Washington State law permits bicycles to be ridden on a sidewalk. And so I have looked to see if we have further bicycle code in city ordinance, just because I haven't had a problem with that brought to my attention, so.
Well, first I'm asking this because an incident happened with myself. I was driving down First Street, stopped at the stop sign right here at the gas station before you turn on highway two.
Yes ma'am.
This young gentleman was riding his bike, he had something in his hand while he was riding, he was a wheel or something for another bike. He didn't, he was like, in, he's further than the barber shop, he was past the barber shop. And he was heading towards the thing. And he did not stop, he didn't stop, he didn't do anything, he wasn't even close to the, the sidewalk. He shot in front of me and I slammed on my brakes, I almost hit him.
He was traveling down Croft, down the highway?
Yeah, I see, I guess highway two, I got it.
Yeah.
And he just whipped right across there in front of me and I slammed on my brakes. And then I just was startled for a few minutes and he kept going. But then when I turned on highway two, he drove his bike in front of me and actually got, threw his bike down on the ground and it came at me while I was trying to drive with this thing in his hand. And he was going to throw it at my car because he thought that I was going to run him over. These kids are not stopping at these stop signs or anywhere.
Well, he didn't have to stop there. He actually was within the law to confront you without stopping.
Excuse me?
He didn't have to stop there, he doesn't have a stop sign there. He was on, he was riding down Croft, he was going west.
Down US two?
On US two?
No, he wasn't, he was on the sidewalk.
Okay, he doesn't have to stop.
He was barreling down the sidewalk.
So he doesn't have to stop before he crosses your street, you had a stop sign. And you're required to stop before you enter the croft.
I didn't stop.
And so now.
And he wasn't there.
When he gets out to confront you, that's, that's a different story, then we have problems.
And then what about these kids on First Street riding in front of everybody on the highway?
That's not law.
Keeping them from driving. We've got a lot of problem bikes right here.
We can address problems with bikes.
Yeah, is this part of the First Street thing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they're saying they're going to be doing traffic on First, so, bikes are qualified.
Just another question, are helmets required?
Okay, thank you Elizabeth. Bob, yes?
I see the sidewalk taken care of, I only got a pizza last week and it was really a challenge, let me tell you. And I'm really glad all that's going to be done. And I'm, I'm sorry that Chris is no longer with us as well. It's kind of a surprise, asking, meeting, so. Maybe I'll watch the YouTube video, I guess if you're watching. That's all.
Okay. Okay, time for citizen comments, do these citizens wish to make a comment? Be sure to step up and speak well and be heard. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay. We have some old businesses, this is the second reading of Ordinance six thirty four, the animal control ordinance. This would be a second, for second reading and approval. And, oh wait, I'm going to look deeper here. This unchanged from last week?
You said six thirty four, but I see six thirty six.
Six thirty six, excuse me. I wrote six thirty four down here, I don't know why. Okay, there we go. So I understand a motion for, for approval.